Hello everybody, we're going to start it. We'll start as always with our seven o'clock workshop. First, I'm going to read a few statements for you. Notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I posted a copy of the agenda on the bulletin board at the municipal complex. Buy a copy of the agenda in the office in the township of Northland County, municipal complex. Forward a copy of the agenda to the Barnet Town Times and Cary Post. Forward written notice to each person who has requested copies of the regular meeting schedule. All the above posting, filing, mailings have taken place on the 12th day of December 2014. And I guess we'll now go to our workshop for total discussion. And Scott, why don't you give away?
Counsel, the first thing I want to do is a microphone check. We did have, we did have the microphones checked, thank you. Since the last meeting in this room, there was nothing wrong with the microphones. I think it's more of a matter of how they're being used. I did send the email out just to make sure that you do hold the microphone no more than six inches from your voice, your mouth rather. So if everybody just, I want to make sure people in the audience can hear. This is a little tedious, but if we just go down the line and check and make sure that the people in the back can hear everybody.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you.
Good evening.
You know that.
I flunked that one.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? How about those with assisted hearing devices? Can you hear? Mrs. Beck, can you hear okay?
Yes.
Good. That's what counts.
Thank you.
Good evening.
That worked.
Mr. Boyall, can you hear that?
Mr. Mayor, the sound system is improved, but the wireless system has not. It is still defective.
Thank you, Mr. Boyall. Scott, you got that? I'll check that.
I do.
Testing, one, two, three. All right, thank you. Testing.
Meeting adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to go over scheduling matters or?
Before we get to the actual crux of the meeting, I'll go through a discussion regarding scheduling matters. Do any council members have any matters they wish to schedule for future? Any official, any changes on the official action agenda or any amendments to this agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if we could just go back just one real quick because I have had several council members inquire about having the county's energy aggregation expert come to a council meeting. And we are looking to do that at the first regular business session in January. A couple council members brought that up recently. Newcomers brought it up a while ago, so we will get that ball rolling. I will invite the county's expert to that meeting.
Fantastic.
Scott, that'll be the meeting on the 26th, correct?
The fir-, yeah, the first meeting after reorganization.
Okay. All right, Scott, you want to talk about reorganization and outstanding appointments?
Yes, I'll actually let Patty quarterback the discussion on the reorganization and outstanding appointments.
And I'm going to pass it to Mrs. Apol.
She's going to pass it to?
All right, now, I think I've reached the end of the line here. Well, so I've now talked to everyone on council and incoming either through email or by phone. And I do have a list. I haven't, I don't have an electronic copy yet, but we were able to fill out every committee with people who had the support of three or more council members. So, you know, it's a solid list that it will pass. If we can discuss it, or I can write up the electronic copy and pass it off to Patty, and we can approve it at our reorganization meeting. So I'll leave the rest to council, how you want to handle it from here.
That sounds great to me.
You got that?
All right, then Patty will get this to you tomorrow.
Okay. That was easy.
Mr. Mayor, the next discussion, Deputy Mayor Jordan had talked to me since the last meeting about, I'm sure most, certainly council members, probably most in the audience remember, there was a discussion a few meetings ago in an attempt to pass a resolution in regards to our surplus and the use of it. It was pointed out that procedurally, things weren't done correctly. And Deputy Mayor Jordan asked about revisiting that. So rather than put it on as a resolution, I figured it better to put it on as a discussion topic first.
And I just wanted to say, the reason I did this is I was assured that it was done correctly the first night, but I don't, I just don't want that perception to happen at the public, that we were trying to do something that, you know, wasn't right. I, it's still, I believe all of us, or, you know, most of us on this board believe in it and want to move forward with it. But I just wanted to make sure it was subtly out there, transparent, to make sure everybody is okay with that. So that's why, instead of having it on as a resolution, it's nice to put it on at any discussion that we need to have, which we've, I know we've already had, but we can have it again, and then officially put it on at our next, be the next business meeting. So that's, I just, I just wanted to put perception sake. Well, I would happily vote for that twice, so I would be happy to put that on again.
Absolutely. And the only concern I had was regards to unanimous vote, when unanimous vote by Robert Shrold's board should be unanimous vote when it brought them to the same meeting. That wasn't addressed, it wasn't addressed. No perception, it's just a pursuit of rule.
Okay.
I still think it's a great idea. I won't be here, so you're free to put on whatever you'd like at that meeting. I still think it's a great idea, and I still support it.
Great, thank you.
So just to clarify, it will just be listed on the next agenda?
It'll be listed as a resolution on the next agenda, or on the next business agenda, yes. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, the next on our agenda for our workshop, Mr. Reagan is here. I just handed out some additional notes, just to remind everyone that the local schools, both public and private, did a contest to help the township choose a new Latin motto for one of the medallions outside of the new library. The library board cut a list of over sixty.
Sixty-one, yes.
Sixty-one, down to eight. Rick took the eight finalists and bounced them off an academic scholar.
Yes.
And is here to discuss it this evening.
This is a very interesting scenario. So we did, we did pare down, took to a subcommittee of the library board, and they chose eight selections, largely based on the English, of course. And then we took that and sent it to the classical studies at the University of Pennsylvania and to Mr. Mulmery. And so we received some comments back indicating that a number of the sayings did not in fact have the proper grammar or syntax and so forth. And then, and so recommended out of those eight, possibly one or two. Then I took the liberty to put it through Google, and not one, not one of the sayings turned out exactly as the author had intended, that came from the student. There are a couple choices that are very close, number, number five. And the reason for the public, I'm only using numbers, is because this is a contest, so I don't want to give away who the theoretical winner is at this point. And in one case, we have two people who said the same thing in slightly different Latin words, so if that one is selected, I would suggest that they both be honored. In any case, just to give a few examples, one's, one, part of one saying said, "Where imagination may soar," and Google says, "Where thought flies." Things like, "Seize a book," became a word I don't even know, P-L-U-C-K. The book knowledge. Book the book knowledge, that's so crazy. Google, Google also had, took a long one and said, "The head of the book at the time of the world received the knowledge they shall." Hello, what does that mean? It certainly doesn't mean what the author intended. So of the numbers of ones that we might look at, number five, number one, and number eight. Number eight can be modified to make that work, and I think there was a sense that number five or number eight might work. So if you would give me direction on one or two or three, I will continue to run this past the scholars and then give it back to you. Hopefully, well, I guess the first meeting in January is reorganized, the second meeting is, what date would that date?
Twenty-sixth.
Well, if it's possible to have some meeting of the minds prior to the 26th of January would might be helpful for me to order the medallions, but in any case. So I'm looking for input from the list that you have had.
It's pretty interesting that all of these has it. Have changes made to them, so it's not as easy as I think people think it is.
Precisely.
I'm wondering where Channel Three, Six, and Ten are, and the news vans in London and California.
I'm all, I'm all, I'm all for dig deeper than Google next time. The opposition ran to Google, neither one or else.
Oh goodness, all right.
I have been to a, having had three years of Latin, but I couldn't try and do any of these. I would absolutely think that number five is the simplest of them.
I think five is short and sweet, and the Google translation is not so bad, so I'm, I'm not a fan of eight at all.
Just to clarify that, the word, estancia, or science, is also means knowledge and/or wisdom in Latin. So you have three words.
Three meanings for it.
Three meanings for that word, yes.
Cover all bases on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I kind of like that one.
I like that one, too.
Simple.
Simple, simple.
Easy and simple, yeah.
Okay. We have a direction, thank you so much.
Kind of to make sure.
Yeah, just a couple of times.
Before it's written in stone.
Literally. Okay, thank you.
And thanks to the schools for their submissions, and thanks to the Latin professors for reviewing this information for us, we really appreciate it.
We would, we'd like to honor the selected person and have the teachers come in with, perhaps even their class. All of the teachers were very excited about the project. They thought the kids had a great time coming up with the recommended sayings, so I think it was a very good way to make some lemonade out of what would have been Latin.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just before we go to the residents' requests and presentations, I just want to provide an acknowledgement, I'm sure council will appreciate. Since the last meeting, we had, Rick, dozens of volunteers to help put the green roof up on the roof. And what that literally meant was taking tray upon tray upon tray upon tray of plants, cedum trays, upstairs to the roof, laying them all out, led by Rick and Mike Woznowski from Reagan Design Group. But there were, unfortunately, more volunteers than I can list now, for fear that I would forget, more than a few.
That's fortunate.
But unfortunate that I, we can't acknowledge them all. There are a couple in the audience tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Hess, I'm trying to think of who else, my glasses aren't on. And of course, Mr. Reagan was wearing his jeans and getting dirty.
Totally.
And they were fifty-pound trays. It wasn't, it wasn't like you were taking a couple little flowers, it was.
I don't know if it was fifty, was it fifty, Rick?
They were heavy.
It was fifty when they were wet.
Right.
And there were half a dozen or dozen of them that were wet. The others were about thirty, thirty to thirty-five pounds.
So we did.
That was easy.
The first day we did, we were aware of it, take a group shot that Karen was able to put on Facebook page to acknowledge everybody, but it really was a tremendous volunteer effort. And Rick, thanks for leading that.
You're so welcome. And thanks all the, all the resident Kathy Ward for helping organize it, and we still have to deal with getting a permit for that.
Okay. At this point, we will go to the resident request and presentation portion of the meeting. If you are a resident and you have a request or a presentation, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Good evening. Pete Miller, 518 Devon Road. First, I just want to thank all the volunteers for the big special needs Christmas party that was held at the Ruff Center yesterday, yesterday. And Victoria was there, it was very nice of you to be there as a member of council. Al Panzarella, member of the board event, was there. And it was a great opportunity for all those who have special needs kids, be able to celebrate and let them celebrate for, you know, for Christmas and the holidays. So I appreciate that Moorestown has, has that in the, in their system, and to be able to include all those with special needs. Second case, it is on the agenda, but I want to thank Chris for all your work on town council. Remember back in, I think it was '09 or '08, he asked me, "Hey Pete, how do I get involved? How do I get involved?" And, and I became, you got him on council somehow. So on behalf of the Moorestown Republic, I love it. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Paul Conroy, 443 North Church, also Mayor Kalkio, thanks a lot, and all the best to you and your family.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy, I appreciate that.
Also for Patty Hunt, thanks for linking the resolutions, that was a, that's a good thing, appreciate that.
And Mr. Crew, thanks, I'd send an email about hazardous chemical and electronic waste pickup at the town, at the fellow works, and you said you'd take care of that, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and just, just for those that, well, Paul had sent the request that the township set up, and some towns do do this, collection for things like motor oil, paint, other hazardous materials. I did talk to the county, there is no guidelines that they provide in terms of, they want us to do it, or they don't want us to do it, it's essentially our choice. So what I'll do is talk to Ken, find out what type of resources we would have to invest in doing something like this. I think Paul brought up a good point in his email that I forwarded to council, which is, or actually, he sent it to all the council. But that, should we make it easier for the residents to dispose of this in the correct way, it'll make things better in terms of less likely for people to dispose of it the incorrect way.
Yeah, absolutely agree. It's a great, it's a great point, and it's a, it's a good service that we should offer. Apparently, just to be clear, there's a little more to it, but it's definitely a great idea. And I agree, because it's a pain to lug stuff up to the county facility.
It is.
Wherever it is, and I know it's up, you know, it's going to take some time, so if we can provide it, I know I'll use it. And a number of times, my wife repaints the living room, it'd be great to finally give her a.
Well, see, with Pete, you can, like, latex paint, you can just let it dry out and throw it out.
Little more, it's. Take it away. Yeah, I heard that, and I know people also sell something important that's supposed to dry out, but for some reason, I live over in the manger sits there and.
You want to check the humidity in your house.
Yeah, I don't know.
They also, goodwill.
This has also been a suggestion of the State of Moorestown, and Lockheed Martin does this periodically as well.
They do it a couple, a couple of times a year, I think, and a couple of times a year.
We might look at the guys from Lockheed Martin from today, the environmental manager over there, for top duties.
Goodwill does take electronic waste. And there's a place on 38 where you can just take it in.
The Re-Store Store, right?
Right. They'll, they'll take that stuff. There's also the trailer at Mount Laurel that is a goodwill trailer. Now, I don't know whether they invite people from out of town to do that, but it is a goodwill trailer, and they're the ones who do it, so. And I just have one more thing, Mr. Crew, I, I'm a little confused about our relationship with New Jersey American Water. Can you in a thumbnail describe what our relationship is with them? I recognize we buy water from them, but when we buy in water that we weren't using, and is that how that works? And how did that come to be?
We don't buy water that we don't use. It may be accurate to say we buy water that we don't need. And the reason being, the state has a calculation based on prior water usage going back, I believe it's eight years, five. And they look at incredible peaks at ridiculous times and apply that to every debt. We have a calculation based on what our wells can provide, and this is, includes Wells Seven and Nine before they were shut down, because the contract with New Jersey American goes back some time. Based on the amount of households, amount of businesses that have water connections, and based on what we can provide, and how the DEP formulates what they call your, not max capacity, but it's the firm capacity. We were required to have a contract with New Jersey American Water to buy what they say we need based on their formula. On average, we leave several hundred million gallons of water, of our water, in the ground. So, but we have to purchase it because the state says that's what we need to, to have our firm capacity needs met.
Is that even if they're not providing the water, or?
Well, that's the thing. Because we're buying it, Mr. Butler does use it, so there is an interconnect. It is on, we do, we do use the water that we purchased from New Jersey American Water, because if we're, if we're buying it, we might as well use it. So, but it's.
But we're paying, sorry, we're paying seven dollars for a thousand gallons for that, selling it for free.
So, I'm sorry, seven, we're paying seven to New Jersey American, and?
You pay close to seven per thousand gallons, and we sell it for free, basically. We have a tier structure, but most people fall within the, if you're twenty-five thousand gallons or less per quarter, you pay three dollars. But like Mr. Crew said, that we're leaving two to three hundred thousand of gallons of water, or, I'm sorry, million, two to three hundred million gallons of our own water and the ground that we would be selling, but instead we have to purchase it for close to seven, and we're still selling that kind of thing.
So is, that sounds a little crazy, I mean, is there any way?
Yes, yes, there's a short term and a long term answer. The long term answer is that the contract with New Jersey American expires in 2020. And we've talked internally with Mr. Butler about, there's a treatment plan on Hartford Road. It's a manually run treat, water treatment plan. So it hasn't worked far longer than Mr. Butler's been our utility superintendent. The goal is, within the next five years, before that contract runs out with New Jersey American Water, is to have that treatment plant up and running. If it is, and assuming all our problems with Seven to Nine are long in our past by then, we won't be able to provide enough water where we will not have to renew, have a new contract with New Jersey American Water in 2020.
Great, thank you. Again, best of luck.
Thanks, Tyler, and see you on campus. Okay. Any other residents? Seeing none? Close that portion? All right, with that, we're going to go over to our regular reading, and we'll start off by standing with minimum silence, I'll buy flag slip. Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to start with reports from members of council, and we'll start with Victoria.
All right, well, since our last meeting, we have a holiday parade, which was damp, but fun. And, you know, after the parade, there was the more arts, arts exhibition in the Ruff Center. And, you know, we have great things going on at the Ruff right now, you know, not just sports, but also the arts. You should see the new arts room, all of their projects up on the walls, music programs are expanding, lots of people are providing scholarships for our young people to participate in these programs. And as Mr. Miller pointed out yesterday, was the specialties holiday party, that's an annual event. And, you know, I've gotten, I've gotten there a couple of times now, and it's a spectacular event. I mean, the kids have a great time, and, you know, as I've said before, it's great to see us really providing a great service to that community. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of, we should congratulate Teresa Miller, is really what I'm saying, on all the great things that she's being, that she's accomplishing there in her and all of her staff. That's it, thanks.
Great job, thank you, Victoria. Stacy?
I just, just wanted to let everyone know that instead of the parade, it was a little damp, but it was fun, it didn't dampen our enthusiasm, that's for sure, especially Chris's little ones handing out their little candy canes, it was great. And thanks to the Lions Club for putting that parade on, it was wonderful. Just wanted to let you know, we are having a tree committee meeting tomorrow night, seven o'clock in the library, and we're going over our Arbor Day celebration. We're looking for volunteers to come in to help us. We are going to be sponsoring and, and holding the state Arbor Day celebration for 2015. So we're looking for sponsors and lots of volunteers, I think we're going to be planting around seventy-five trees or so. So it'll be a wonderful, wonderful event. So if anyone would like to state that, please come and to our meeting tomorrow night. And again, just thanks to the great volunteers that went up and down those stairs with those heavy trays, to take care of that rain garden. It was, it was a great day, two days, Thursday and Friday, and I was very appreciative of everyone who showed up and did that. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Stace. Grant?
Well, I have very little to report, because I've been kind of out of commission for two weeks, and it's really great to be here. I did want to say thank you to all the board committee volunteers in the town, which make a great strength for us, we're a wonderful town, because of you people. I was not able to say that at the meeting, and I'd like to say it now. Sorry, I missed the Christmas parade, because I understand, well, it was quite good. And certainly the dinner. Thank you.
Mr. Garwood?
Thank you. I'm going to have to echo Mr. Newcomers appreciation for all the boards and committees. I, myself, got a little tied up in the hospitals and was not able to make it. It's a, it's a great, great dinner that we all like to get to, to thank the residents. So again, for all the boards and committee members, thank you very much. The parade was fun, we actually had snowballs thrown at us from one of the groups, so it was a lot of fun, even though it was wet, it was a great event, and I want to thank the Lions Club for doing that. And it was great driving down Second Street, repave Second Street, we got that done. So this is all good, so that's it, for me.
Thank you, Phil, likewise, great time at the parade, did rain, but that was okay, same game. The boards and committee dinner was a couple weeks ago, and that was also a real nice time honoring the people that donate their time to help make our community a better place. That is all I have to report. We'll discuss upcoming meetings. Upcoming meetings will occur here at the municipal complex, 111 West Second Street, here at the council chambers, on Tuesday, January 6th, 2013, 7:00 p.m., which is the reorganization meeting. And followed by January 26th, 2015, 7:00 p.m. workshop, 7:30 p.m. official action. And with that, do we have any agenda updates? If not, I will accept a motion to adopt the consent agenda resolution. So moved?
Second.
On favor? I answer names, and then that passes. Moving down to eight, uh, seven on the agenda is going to be presentations and proclamations. As many of you know, we just, as we just said, we had our boards and committee meetings, board and committee dinner a couple weeks back, and this is actually Boarding Committee Appreciation Week. So we would like to proclaim this week as Boarding Committee Appreciation Week, and advise that. And by this initiative proclaiming Appreciation Week, council presents a special proclamation to members who have served three or more years and are no longer serving. Do we have any retired members, or looking for, I see standing a wire, Mark Morgan, if you can come up to the microphone, please?
I know Al Pandora was on that list. He did text me today to say he was probably not going to make it.
And I see Rod anywhere? I have him back in the back. You guys can come forward? Let's take a song. Welcome, and thank you for coming. And I will read the proclamation that I'm presenting to you with your individual one. Whereas the township of Moorestown has a renowned reputation for its community spirit, safe neighborhoods, and abundance of beauty and history. And whereas the township of Moorestown is an exceptional community in which many aspire to live and raise a family. And whereas such an acknowledgement does not come by chant, but rather it is achieved by way and dedication from its residents, who continuously volunteer their time serving on boards and committees, in an endless effort to improve the quality of life for their children and to maintain the community's distinct character. And whereas it is through these volunteer members that Moorestown is able to preserve its stature and improve the way of living for its citizens and businesses. And whereas the township council, the township of Moorestown wishes to honor, thank, and publicly recognize those who have served and those who continue to serve on the various boards and committees. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim the week of December 15th to be known as Moorestown Board and Committee Members Appreciation Week. And we call upon the people of Moorestown to take heart to the words of Sir Winston Churchill, who said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." And in your travels, thank those boarding committee members who serve our community so diligently and unselfishly. And then give them under my hand all this fifteen thanks ever. And for Rod, Rod has graciously and selfishly served our committee for fifteen years. I want to thank you for that. I want that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before we get to honoring you, if we could just switch up the next two presentations, because you're stuck sitting here regardless of how long the meeting goes. But I understand members of the La Nola Ad Hoc Committee that have a presentation tonight-
Oh, yeah.
-have a time commitment, so if we can get them, yeah, it'd be really better.
We can do it like this. Can everybody say anything? We can do it like this. I'm just going to click right, I'm just going to click right. So hi, I'm Jamie Bourne, 45 Revere Avenue. And maybe over, a little over a year ago, we put together an informal group of members of the La Nola section of Moorestown, some of which are here. John Lloyd is here, Debbie Branding Hess is here, some couldn't make it tonight. That would be Matt Rosini and Patty Atkinson. And Victoria was our liaison. And we just kind of took a look around La Nola at what was, I don't want to say wrong, because I don't think there's anything wrong, but what needed work and what needed attention. And so we kind of put just something together for everyone and for council, so that you're aware of what we've identified as areas that need improvement. Okay, so first would be, you can see from the pictures, I can email you better ones if you want, broken and deteriorating curbs. That's actually the intersection of Camden and La Nola Road. So you can see there's actually sections of it that are non-existent. There are numerous unmarked bus stops. If you count, there are, and I don't think anybody knew this, because I didn't, I think there are fifteen bus stops between Retro Fitness and Main Street. I don't even know where some of them are. And they're not marked. Actually, the main bus stop in front of the McDonald's has a bent sign with no notification on it, nothing. And the bus frequently stops in front of what was supposed to be a Japanese restaurant, which is technically not a stop. So those are two issues, traffic and otherwise. Also, we don't have, there are no bus shelters. And the bus stop in front of McDonald's right there, which you can see, is used quite frequently. It's a main bus stop. I think we could probably call the post office and see if they could help us out with this. It's rusting, it's uneven, it's kind of just gross. It could be painted and it would be better, but that was just another issue. It's on the corner of Camden and La Nola, if you're not familiar with it. And it's an eyesore. Also, holiday decorations that are in disrepair and non-working order. That was an issue last year. Somehow, some reason, it's still an issue this year. The same wreaths that were out last year are still out. The same mismatched lights are still mismatched. I'm not exactly sure why, the few wreaths that were broken haven't been repaired, but they were put back up, not working. So, and this was, like I said, a year to the day, probably, when they went back up, township was notified. Camden Avenue streetscaping. Planting trees along Camden Avenue and La Nola Road is a priority. I know that we can do that. We'd like to see that happen. Sidewalks and curving repaired and were replaced. Bus stop review, including addition, removal, and relocating of bus stops. The bus stop in front of McDonald's, for instance, to move it down maybe a hundred feet to where the pocket park, which we'll address in a minute, would keep the traffic out of the intersection a little bit more and not right in front of the McDonald's. That was something that we had noticed. A bus stop enclosure there would be nice, like the ones on the Main Street, were similar. And to repair or replace the holiday decorations. I have to say, we actually really liked the wreaths a lot, so not looking for, yeah, excellent, I mean, whatever's most cost-effective. We're not unhappy, nobody's unhappy with them, they're actually quite pretty. So, but if they worked, it would be better. The pocket park, so forty-five hundred dollars, if you don't know, forty-five hundred dollars was set aside by McDonald's when it was rebuilt to improve the lot between them and Manhattan Bagel. And what we were looking for was the township landscape engineer to review the space and recommend a budget-friendly option. Now, since we put this presentation together, there has apparently been a plan put forward. There's a concrete pad there now, and possibly some trees planted, but I'm not sure. I don't really know what else is supposed to happen there, because I found out about the concrete pad when I drove past it. So I don't know if moving the bus stop would still be able to be incorporated in or anything like that, but, so that's kind of moved forward in some respect. Here's another, the hockey rink. When we did this, the hockey rink was still standing. There were deteriorating walls, exposed rusty nails, entire walls collapsed, fortunately, unfortunately. Fortunately, it wasn't from vandalism, it was from neglect and weather. You can see in some of the pictures, there's vegetation growing under the boards. There was no broken glass inside the, I went in and took all these pictures. There was no broken glass, there was no, the holes are weather. The plywood was soft. The nets that are there, the kids had attempted to tape them back together, because they've just broken over time. After they demolished the rink, funny, this picture, I took this picture the day they demolished the rink. We had twelve kids show up to know rink on their roller blades. So they grabbed the nets and they went into the hockey rink, and they were able to play for about an hour until four people came up to play tennis, and they got booted. They shouldn't have to play hockey in a tennis court. They're resourceful, but they shouldn't have to do that. So code enforcement. Proprietary zoning laws to preserve the appearance and safety of our community, obviously. We have identified issues regarding code violations in La Nola, and we'd like to set up an appropriate approved communication channel with zoning and construction. I mean, that goes without saying, we're not looking to jam anybody up, or just a little bit of help and recognition and, I don't know, some ideas. And that's it. We do have an email address, so if anyone's got any ideas, that would be great, because we'll take any ideas and help that we can get. Any questions? None?
No. Well, I don't see any questions, but Jamie, I just want to say thank you. Jamie has worked very, very hard over the last year or so on this commission, leading that up, along with the rest of the commission that I mentioned earlier. Really, this is a great group of people who cared deeply about their community, and, you know, we've gotten a lot of great input. And so now that we, we are beginning to, the process of forming the ad hoc committee on the township side, you know, we'll be taking all of this input into account and making sure that we get these things done. So Jamie, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Jamie, do you realize that you were volunteered at the last council meeting to be part of that?
I did, and I thank you for that. I'm actually looking forward to it, because I do appreciate it.
Yeah, and I want to say thanks too. You know, one of the things that I think will be good about that group is we will be working with the county. And obviously Camden Avenue and La Nola both being county roads. Some of the stuff, like the trees, we know we can plant. Some of the other things, the sidewalk deterioration, it'd be very difficult to do anything without the county's involvement.
Sure.
So, yeah, I really hope we can take what you guys have done and what others have done in other projects, and just capitalize and build on all of it, and, you know, have the area reach its full potential, I think is possible, if we can do it. Thanks, you did a good job.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay. Who's next? What's his next guy?
Next, Mr. Mayor. You and I, I guess, will have to go back down and stand in the front, because we're going to, I hold a short straw, and on behalf-
We were all fighting over it.
On behalf of the township, I'm going to present you with a proclamation. All right. Now, Mr. Mayor, I would just, I would like to say a few words off script, off the proclamation first. Because, you know, first I had the privilege of working with Councilman Piakio when I was hired, and in the last year, I've had the privilege of working with Mayor Piakio. And I have to say, you absolutely stepped up your game. The amount of, and this is what I think people don't see, the public doesn't see, the amount of time that you and the other members of council put towards your passion and dedication to the community is just amazing, considering you have a full-time job, and your family life and everything else. It's a huge time commitment, and, you know, one of the things I've enjoyed about your years as mayor is that passion that you have, and I've seen it, seen it in public, I've seen it in private. And like you, I share sometimes the tendency of that passion to manifest itself in very interesting ways. We've had some memorable council meetings this year. But in any case, on behalf of the township, I want to present you with this proclamation and some fine Moorestown jewelry to add to your collection. You've got the pin already, but I'll read the proclamation, and it reads, "Whereas there are many fine communities in the state of New Jersey, and whereas although there are many fine communities in the state of New Jersey, there are only a few exceptional communities. And whereas the township of Moorestown is one of those exceptional communities in which to live and raise a family. And whereas the reputation of these few exceptional communities is unquestionably built upon the foundation and footprints of its leaders, who have demonstrated the will, leadership, and vision to build a better community. And whereas these forefathers striving to leave behind a stronger and better quality of life for future generations to come, provide an invaluable service to their community. And whereas Christopher Piakio has served this community as mayor in 2014, a member of the governing body and on various boards and committees from 2010 through 2014. And whereas the service given to the community unselfishly has aided in forever changing the environment in which our families, friends, and businesses reside. And whereas the township council of the township of Moorestown, County of Burlington, state of New Jersey, does wish to publicly recognize Christopher Piakio's immeasurable contributions, now therefore be resolved by the township council, the township of Moorestown, County of Burlington, state of New Jersey, that it is with great sense of gratitude, we proclaim Christopher Piakio to be an outstanding member of the community. And as he carries on from his public service, we can recall upon the people of the township of Moorestown to recognize the sacrifices and good works, and it is actually signed Patricia Hunt's oral proclamation. You did not have to sign this year."
Well, it's good.
So, please join me in vowing her.
Excellent. I'm going to say my final words till the end of the meeting, but thank you very much, I truly appreciate this. Thank you, Scott, very much. Means a lot. Okay. Ordinances on second reading, there are none. First reading as well, there are none. We will move to consent agenda resolutions. Mr. Manager, if you read them by title?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First is 223-2014, awarding a contract for tree maintenance services for 2015. Next is 224-2014, a resolution authorizing the 2014 budget appropriation transfers. Next is 225-2014, a resolution authorizing the transfer of eighty-five thousand dollars from the 2014 current budget appropriation for snow removal to the Snow Removal Reserve Trust Fund. Next is 226-2014, authorizing a tax collector- Next is 226-2014, authorizing the tax collect relation of certain water and sewer charges. 228-2014, a resolution to cancel prior year's outstanding checks. 229-2014, authorizing emergency services contract for required electrical work at 111 West Second Street in the estimated amount of twenty-three thousand dollars. 230-2014, eliminating annual bonus program for township manager and establishing annual salary for 2014. 231-2014, approving contract change order number one to Air Control Technology, Inc., in the amount of nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for a step-down generator for the town hall rainwater harvesting system. And 232-2014, authorizing release performance guarantee for Lockheed Martin 199 Wall Street Road, Lot 6700, Lot 10, pre and final site plan, Building 143.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. At this part, at this point, we will open the floor for public comment on those consent agenda resolutions, which were just read. If you have a comment about those items, please come for a question. Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. Edelbeck 209, Perry. A question on 229. That's about what? The emergency electrical work.
Want to take that note?
When we moved into this building on, I believe it was May 19th, we were operating under a TCO. There were several things during the process.
TCO?
A temporary certificate of occupancy. We wanted to get in the building as quick as possible, but there were still things, they were working on the construction. Things were pointed out by the inspectors during the process before we worked towards our final CO, certificate of occupancy. There were things like emergency lighting that considered a safety issue that were around the building. There were also issues having to do with the life safety systems, the elevator and emergency lighting. And normally, this would have been things that would have been easily handled underneath a change order. But there were difficulties between the construction manager and the real architect as well, but more the construction manager trying to work with the GC and the GC sub, wasn't the GC as much as the GC sub, because we've worked with the GC on other change orders. But the GC sub did not, was, I guess, didn't either have the time or the urgency to handle the matters. So, it was recommended by Greg that we bring in another contractor who was actually working on some other areas with us. So, that's what it was. This would normally have been handled on a change order, but we had to get a lot of electrician, because the sub electrician wasn't going to do the work at time.
So essentially, we hired this electrician directly rather than as a sub through Sammy.
This, the emergency lighting is emergency lighting, like the exit sign kind of thing.
There was lighting on the outside, because obviously, patrons and public leave at nighttime, so there was outside lighting issues. But then there was also inside areas where there was actually initial to the generator, where we were having trouble when we first opened up, because we found that the server room was not connected to the generator. So, when we would have power failures, our systems were going down. We were having a lot of problems with the building, because a lot of the building was electronic now. So, we brought in an engineer, sorry, an electrician to do some wiring to set that up. But then that became an issue in itself, where then we had to, it caused, there were other life safety issues, but the generator, you can only have the elevator and the, this particular generator can only have the lights, emergency lights, and the elevator. So, basically, we had to fix this quickly. And there's still issues that they're working under, which are safety issues, that they're working with our inspectors on. These are things our inspectors have to manage. There's other work that will need to be done. There's electrical work that will need to be done to this building, as well as another backup generator for the server room, but that will go out big. That's not considered part of the emergency. But anything that was part of the emergency, we brought them in to do the work. And this is basically ratifying that work.
Question, wouldn't this been part of the contract, part of the building? Why change it?
But that was my point. Normally, this would have been changed. When things come up, there would be change orders. We've had thirteen change orders, I believe, on this project. But electrical change orders, the electrical subcontractor was not honoring those. So, we had to bring in another contractor.
Wouldn't it have been part of the basic building design and part of the initial contract? Why is this a change order?
If I might address one of them. The building inspector, for example, would not approve the emergency lights that are in the library until the bookshelves were up and fully loaded. He was afraid someone would not be able to see the emergency light if the bookshelves were blocking it. So, he required that they be moved after the bookshelves were installed. Clearly, the contract was for him to, the contractor, to install it prior to the books going in. So, when the books came in and the inspector wanted to move, that became an extra service. That was one of many little items like that. They were part of the request for change. I think the word "emergency" is perhaps not really valid. It was, changes necessary to...
It's not emergency, desperation.
It wasn't desperation. It was, it was a matter of making sure things would work properly. And the only thing that was, was perhaps in that category was making sure that all the power to IT was appropriate.
And I disagree. We're deemed to emergency, because some of these issues, we would have to evacuate the building and the construction official would shut the building down.
That's true. That's true. Building inspectors threaten that in almost all...
Mr. Beck, I attended many of the construction meetings and the kind of flushing out, really, that this is generally, if something would happen with an eleven-point-five-million-dollar project of any kind, you cannot predict, for instance, the building inspectors, all approvals at all times, financially, in the beginning of design. Some of this is the flushing out that would go on. And in change orders, we have very much been held down in that, or it's been held down by, particularly Mr. Beck.
Even if you added this to the change order group, well under our change order budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Any other members of the public that wish to come forth and comment on the consent agenda resolutions? Seeing none. What was that portion? Counsel comment? Any comments on any of those resolutions or motion to adopt?
Move to, move to adopt.
Second. Patty, it's your call. We got there first.
I didn't even say it.
It's the last time I leave that to you. Let's go with Phil. Let's leave that for Phil. All right. Full call.
Ms. Nickar?
Yes.
Ms. Garwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving to, made it to the meeting. There are none. Then we'll go to approval expenditures. Anybody has any questions or comments regarding the expenditures? Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to approve the expenditures.
Seven.
Second.
All right. Ellie?
I moved up.
Stacy.
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We've done it. Continue the workshop. We'll go to comments from the public. For items that are listed on the agenda, if you have a comment about something listed on the agenda, come forth. Name an address for the Rutgers.
John Loew, 27 Harding Avenue, Moorestown. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address you personally. As you well remember, four years, plus years ago, you and I and, I guess Pete Miller was also in the room at the time, and we asked you to step up and serve our town as a council owner. So, I figured I was there at the end. At the beginning, I'd better be here at the end.
I'll be taking Kirby outside.
I'm sure there were times, along the four years, where you were cursing me on what I got you into or helped get you into. In any event, on a personal note, I have to thank you. I grew up in a house where my father was on the town council, so I personally, the drain on one's family, of the commitment you make to your local government. So, I, on a personal level, appreciate what you've done for town. You've served the town well. You've served yourself well. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Very nice to see that. Thank you. You want the members of the public?
Mr. Mayor, I have one little comment.
Sure.
I just wanted to say that the Rutgers grant is completed. The system is done, as well as the plants on the roof and the other items for that hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar grant that we received. And Tom is getting the money all back from Rutgers.
Wow, that's great.
I just wanted to put that to rest.
That's a great thing. Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll go to closing, closing comments by members of council. Why don't we start with Craig this time?
Well, first off, Chris, I wanted to thank you for your service. It was good to work with you. As a matter of fact, you and I were, you're people from the council who worked on the trash conversion, if you remember. And I think we can call that a very success. And I extend my hand to you. Good luck in your endeavors. Godspeed.
Thank you, Greg.
Chris, thank you very much. You've been a great friend, a great mentor. You really, as we said, you stepped up this year and it was, it was great to see you. And thank you very much for helping me out, getting my feet up to this. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And for the rest of you, I wish you all very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Have a safe and happy New Year. And we look forward to seeing you next year. Thanks.
Stacy?
Well, what can I say, Chris? I just wanted to, it's been my honor and my privilege to serve these past four years with you. We've had some crazy times. Off my hair on the day. But you were always steadfast in the way you wanted to go. And I was very appreciative of you. And you always had my back. And I really was very, very appreciative of that. Moorestown is very lucky to have you. And hopefully, you will continue to stay involved. And I bet your family will be happy to have you back, back at home where you want to be with them. So, congratulations on your four years. I will miss you in the next four years. But I think Manny's out there somewhere. He wasn't. There he is. So, we got big shoes to fill, Manny. And to everyone else here, just Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Everyone have a safe and enjoyable holiday. And we'll see you in January.
Victoria?
Well, Chris, you know, I'm going to round it all out now. Also, I have my thanks to the pile. Really, thank you for your leadership and your mentorship over the last two years.